... school board meeting, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First thing on our agenda is approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
Madam President, there is an addendum to the personnel report that should be at your place, and we will not need an executive session this evening.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move approval of the agenda with the changes noted.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Emma or either?
Yes, and I agree, thank you.
We have a little ghost here. Emma is unable to be here physically, but she is here connected by voice and we include her in everything. So, motion carried, seven zero. Next is recognitions and presentations, first with You Make a Difference Awards.
Good evening. The You Make a Difference Award is presented to staff members whose exemplary actions support students, colleagues, and the mission of Salina Public Schools. Recipients of these awards receive a lapel pin and a handwritten note personally delivered by a Board of Education member. Molly Cherry, ESL instructor, Cottonwood Elementary School. Molly's influence is appreciated by students and staff alike, notably her ability to promote a feeling of calm throughout the building as students wait patiently and quietly for their buses. Colleagues credit her creativity for improving their experiences with bus duty. Thank you Molly for positively impacting students and staff at Cottonwood. Michelle Augustine and Michelle Chora, night custodians at Husner Elementary School. Husner's evening custodians have become an integral part of the school family. Their enthusiasm to support a positive school culture was evident when they used their own time during weekends to decorate classroom doors for superhero and Grinch themes. Thank you Michelle Augustine and Michelle Chora for making a difference. Michelle Post, secretary, Opportunity Now. Always positive, attentive, on task, and grounded in serving students, Michelle wears many hats at Opportunity Now. She works with alternative placement and homebound efforts, serves as health delegate, coordinates multi-agency involvement, and shares her technical expertise with staff. Thank you Michelle for making a positive difference at Opportunity Now. And this evening, we will also recognize our Renaissance Teachers of the Month, September through December 2018, if they will please join Dr. Hardy in the front of the room. Renaissance teachers are recognized through radio announcements and on the citywide self-storage electronic sign. They receive a prize package supported by Y-93.7, KSAL, 24/7 Travel Stores, and Citywide Self-Storage. September through December Renaissance Teachers of the Month were: Central High School, Michael Stoffer, History and Government Teacher; Danton McDefitt, Senior English and Intensive Reading Teacher; Lakewood Middle School, Michael Billinger, Computer Studies Teacher; Elizabeth Kenyon, Library Media Specialist; Mandy Etiger, Special Education Teacher; South High School, Lisa Landauer, Special Education Teacher; TJ Slade, Business and Technology Teacher; Gary Seibel, Industrial Arts Teacher; Matt Mosher, Gifted Teacher; South Middle School, Candace Crawford, Adaptive Special Education Teacher; Miranda Lumley, Sixth Grade Math and Reading Teacher. Due to prior commitments, the following were unable to be with us this evening: Amy Frost and Casey Christman of South Middle; Tracy Pfeifer and Teri Rowletter at Central High; and Kathleen Haynes at Lakewood Middle School. Would you please allow the Board of Education to congratulate you now?
Thank you so much. We appreciate all you do for kids.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for what you do. How's my favorite student? Thank you for what you do. Hey, you Seibel. Thanks so much. Really appreciate all you do for our kids.
Thank you very much for all you do.
Appreciate everything.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is approval of the consent agenda items. And those are the minutes of the December 11th, 2018 regular meeting, personnel report, financial reports, which include the December bills list and the December bond bills list; November treasures report, November investment report, November journal entries, the bond budget summary for December; approved Stewart PTA gift acceptance for Chromebooks for the purchase of 33 Chromebooks in the amount of $9,900; approved sport utility vehicle bill bid to Long MacArthur Incorporated for the purchase of a 2019 Ford Expedition Max in the amount of $38,210; approval agreement with Salina Regional Health Center for the athletic trainer services for a two-year agreement beginning with the 2019-2020 school year. Do I have a motion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I move that we accept the consent agenda as provided.
Thank you. Second? Motion, first and second, are there any discussion, comments? Those in favor, raise your right hand. Emma?
I'm in favor, thank you.
Okay, we'll include you. Approval seven zero. Before we move on to public forum, if there's anyone here from Stewart PTA, would they like to come forward at this time? If you'd like to make any comments, we want to hear you and get you recorded, so the mic is working there. But thank you so much for the gift, that's a wonderful thing.
And that's exactly what I was going to say. We are so pleased with our PTA. They take such good care of our staff and students, and we're really looking forward to having these extra Chrome's so that during testing season, we don't have to recapture Chrome's from classrooms. The classrooms can continue with instruction, and we have additional for testing.
Great. That 33, that's a large number.
Well, the only thing I would add is we're very fortunate to have families that really fundraise well and do a lot to contribute to Stewart and allow us to make gifts like this to the school, so that's
That's great.
Nice to be able to do.
It helps us all, actually.
Right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments, anyone? Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is public forum. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to come forward and make a comment, you may do so. I don't see anyone at this time, so we'll move on to action agenda. First thing is 2019 summer school program with Shannon Rector.
Good evening. I wanted to make sure my cohorts were up here with me, you know, that they don't stay in the audience here, because really, summer school does not happen without all of the tremendous efforts of Kelly Heisman and Cheryl Worth. Those are directors of summer school. They put many, many hours in to prepare as they go through the summer, to work with the students and the staff, and, you know, communicating with parents. They are actually that foundational piece that makes it so successful. So, tonight, what we want to do is we want to do a little bit of a review of 2018, and then also some information about the 2019 summer school proposal that we're bringing forward. So ladies, Cheryl, I'll go ahead and talk about the elementary program.
I want to begin by thanking the Board and our district staff members for supporting summer school, as well as the opportunity to be a part of summer school where we're working to maintain student mastery skills throughout the year and help decrease that achievement gap as they prepare for their upcoming school year. For the 2018 summer school session, we enrolled 439 students. Those were students grades kindergarten through fifth. These students were identified as candidates through district at-risk criteria. And each year, we get the input of the reading, math, and the assessment coaches with our district that helps us update that criteria so that it is something that makes all students district-wide eligible to be a part of. Instructionally, our summer school staff implements Guided Reading Plus, and daily, they utilize resources that were purchased to support Guided Reading Plus at all levels for our students to achieve. Teachers keep running records and daily anecdotal notes on student performance in both areas of reading and math, and that is just one form of communication that they can have with parents, as well of their end-of-summary report that is sent to the parent and to their home school, so their upcoming school year teacher can see some of the things they worked on and some of the skills that they had. In addition to academic support, we were able to provide transportation with Durham School Services for 60% of our students. All students are eligible to have breakfast, and students attending math take a break during that math session for something very important, and that is lunch, and they love that. Our daily attendance rate was 92%, and to help encourage that attendance rate, we try to make summer school as fun as possible, because sometimes, it's not always their choice of where to be. We do program-wide prize patrols and performance pennies to recognize our students for growth that they've made academically, socially, cooperatively with their peers, emotionally, just for having that positive attitude and working hard for that extended learning opportunity. We have volunteer hours that are fostered through the Foster Grandparent Program, and last year, we were fortunate to have a student who was in her education program and just took her own time to get into some more classrooms, use some more teaching strategies, and work with kids. We also public, have our partnership with the public library, and each year, we saw an increase on our Tuesday checkout for the number of kids getting books in their hands, which was exciting. We did have a few students withdraw, as we have had in the past, and a lot of times, that can occur with unexpected family obligations, or just some attendance that the parents didn't expect to come up. But I feel like we had a large number of students that we served, and I think any student that's able to be a part of our program is definitely benefiting. Overall, we had 34 teachers and seven paras that were providing this extended learning opportunity to elementary students in 305, and I think it was well worth every minute they spent in the classroom.
Well, I too would like to thank you guys for supporting the summer school program. We had the middle school and the high school program at Central this year, which we felt was very successful, centrally located. Students were able to use the public transport to get to and from, as well as our busing company, so we appreciated that. Middle school program looked a little bit different this year. We incorporated the social-emotional piece. We had a timeframe from 8:30 to 10:30, which spent 30 minutes with some social-emotional, about 70 minutes of academic time, and then we would wrap up with some social-emotional as well. Teachers felt like, middle school-wise, that this was probably one of the most beneficial years that they have done this, in the sense that they felt like they had the opportunity to meet with the students, actually talk to the students, kind of walk through some of the problems that they maybe have had in the past, and make a difference, as opposed to just putting middle school onto the edgenuity program that, like, we've seen in the past. And Ms. Rector will be talking about that, kind of some suggestions we have for middle school at this point, after seeing the success with that. We did have 100% completion in our social-emotional curriculum, 75 completion with our content. The content delivery was computer-based, and then we did the social-emotional with some help with Sarah Lancaster and Ms. Rector's office. Content delivery, we are hoping to move to a more direct instruction format with supplemental support through edgenuity. We would like to incorporate that social-emotional development that we were working with, those lessons. We'd like to integrate that into more direct instruction with content and create some real-life experience with maybe some community support, is kind of where we're heading with that idea. High school program, credit recovery, we had 142 total half-credits earned. This year, electives, we had 114 of half-credit earned. Speech, computer apps, one, computer apps, two, for all the electives. Our driver's education program continues to be a hot commodity for us all. 76 students participated, all of them achieved permits, which is exciting for all of us who drive on the roads with them. ACT prep course is always very popular, 73 students participated in preparation for that June ACT. This year, in the high school, we did issue that attendance policy, which we think really did increase that regular attendance, especially in the five-week period that we had this year. The completion rate showed that. The reduction of sessions, last year, if you remember, we took out the 12 to 2 session. And what we saw this year with our numbers is that we had the same number of completers as we did last year, or very close, so we don't feel like that impacted our numbers of completion at all. And then, like I said earlier, the central location was ideal for all students being able to make it to the center of the town.
So as we look into summer of '19, there is a little bit of difficulty with how our school year is ending. If you look at the master calendar for our school year, we are ending pretty late compared to years past. And when we look at how to identify where we put summer school, we need to give the schools enough time to finish up their school year, to kind of look through all of that final tally of how students have performed, especially at the high school. And so, we are looking at a June 3rd start date for summer school this year. And so, it'll be from June 3rd through June 28th for almost all programs. And the reason that we went ahead and went with the June 3rd through June 28th, we talked to many of the individuals that were involved in the summer school program. We really did not want to start that last week of May, because when we look at that week, the Monday is a holiday. Our teachers, our counselors, you know, just finished up on Friday. Our counselors have to come back and go through all of that material, and then to also be able to enroll any students that have failed a course. And so, in looking at that aspect, we also have to have enough time to get that information entered into Skyward, to get parents notified, and so there's a lot of moving parts that happen. And so, we really do need that four days of that week to be able to get those things happening. When we look at a June 3rd to June 28th schedule, that is only a four-week summer school schedule. In the past, we have been basically four weeks and four days, so just one day short of five. And so, as we talked about that, how are we going to meet the needs of the students and not, you know, shorten that program to where it does not have enough benefit? And so, when we talk to the elementary, we are looking at an 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. class start, or class time. And what that does is extends the day 30 minutes. In reality, that 30-minute extension is actually going to work to our benefit, because we had a lot of difficulty getting all of the summer school students fed, and then turning around and having the open lunch at that summer school location. This will allow the teachers to go through lunch, have more time at lunch, and then be able to come back into the classroom and put a final kind of activity or whatever they need to focus on at the end of the day. And so, that does extend that time, and it also recaptures almost all of the time that we're losing from that four days that we had in the past. When we look at the middle school program, we're going from an 8:30 to 10:30. We do believe that the changes that we want to make with the middle school program, going to a more direct instruction and stepping away a little bit from the edgenuity, we're going to be able to really kind of target into what is the students' needs, and also have that more interactive, social-emotional aspect, the team-building, the problem-solving, and all of that collaboration piece, which we really think helps enrich that summer school for middle school students, because really, the students that are attending summer school from middle school, they have had lots of opportunities to work with that content, and sometimes, the barriers in their way of actually passing math or passing reading is not so much about the content academic knowledge, it really is about the connection to the school, the interactions, some of the other kinds of barriers that get in the way of some students. So, we feel that if we work on the social-emotional piece of that and have that really strong, direct instruction, we're going to get them better prepared for that next year of middle school or that next year of high school. When we look at the high school times, that's going to vary based upon the program. And so, our ACT prep class, we are going to start that actually on May 29th, because we have almost all of our enrollees done prior to any May enrollment. And so, they're going to actually be part of that April enrollment that we always do each and every year. And so, we have that roster identified. So, we really believe that having the ACT prep start a few days before the rest gives us an extended time, because they take the test on June 8th. And so, there just really wasn't any way to do the full ACT prep without having a little bit of an extension into May. And so, we've been working with the instructor on that, and how is that going to look? Then the other courses, like I said, vary by which session they're involved in. One of the things that we found last year, when we reduced the number of sessions, is that we have such wonderful teachers working with us in summer school, that there were a couple kids that needed an additional class. We were able to work with those summer schools teachers and kind of have a modified program, so that way, we could meet the needs of those students that, you know, were relying on summer school to be able to prepare them for that next year of high school. And so, we know that even though the timeframe is shorter for the high school in the four weeks, we believe that the credit recovery, because of the flexibility of the teachers and the fact that we can kind of move beyond the end of that day, that we will be able to meet the needs there. And so, we're really going to be keeping a close eye on that progress and making sure that our students can get through that four weeks. And if not, then we're going to make adjustments on the backend. Every year, we make adjustments in regards to driver's ed. There are many students in driver's ed that when we get to the end of the summer school program, they still need more time driving. And so, we have always given the authority to our driver's ed teachers to extend that, to go into July a little bit. So, if we find that we still have students that are trying to meet that expectation for that credit recovery course or that enrichment course or driver's ed, we are going to make sure that we have that possibility to go into July. The majority of our students won't need that, so we want to just make sure that we have that opportunity available for the ones that do need it. And then, as you look at locations, you see that elementary this year is going to be at Stewart Elementary. In the past, it had been at Cottonwood. Well, this summer, Cottonwood is getting a new roof or roof repairs, and so, we're not going to be able to have it at Cottonwood. We wanted to have a location that was centrally located and that also had good bus access. And another piece of this is we wanted to make sure that we had a building that wasn't having any repairs done. And Stewart is the school that won out, so I know Deanna, although she's still here, but I know she's really excited about that. And so, we've already been working with Lane Norris in food service and getting those things aligned, and so, we will have our summer school at Stewart this year. And then, we are going to repeat and have secondary summer school at Central. We're able to really differentiate that space and have an area for high school students and an area for middle school students, which allows us to be able to help with those transitions and help with that supervision. So, are there any questions about the summer school program?
Carrie?
Yeah, I had a question. I read that the high school kids, when they're in the credit recovery, they work to 80% mastery, I think it was called. Do we give a grade to those kids? How do those classes graded?
They do get a grade, and the maximum grade that they can achieve is a B. That is in alignment with the performance-based diploma program that we've had in this district, to where, as they work through edgenuity, how the system is set up is that there is a testing component that has students, that they have to reach that 80% mark to be able to move on. And so, they have set the cut score then at a B is the maximum score they can get for that class.
Deanne?
You talked in the high school program about the attendance policy increased the attendance? Was there a change in the attendance policy this year?
In years past, attendance had always just been stated as a need to attend. There had never been an actual amount of days. And so, last year, we put in place that on, we had to be there for the majority of the time, and after five absences, we would drop if we had not been contacted by parents. And so, we had publicized that early on, and when we had conversations with parents about vacations and things like that, it was, we were able to say, this is the timeframe at the five days, this is where we would be at for that reason, and parents were able to then make plans around summer school, as opposed to trying to take a break in the middle of summer school. Students were also aware of it, which helped some of our high school students who don't like to get up in the morning, actually get up in the morning and get there. And so, that's kind of how that benefited.
Thank you. More comments, questions? Carol?
Yeah, thanks. I had had several, but you did talk about the change to direct instruction or more direct instruction and computer use, so that's been answered. And the amount of time spent on academics versus social-emotional, and you've altered that to a degree, I see, as well. But my other two questions are in relation to, one, social-emotional. Did you find during the fall semester that there was an impact of that social-emotional teaching with those youngsters? How do you evaluate your success?
Can I say that we went back and looked at each one of those individual students that was involved in summer school? That was not a piece that we did, and that is a good piece that we might, that we probably do want to introduce in the future. One of the things that we found in kind of that evaluation piece that we used really was that the middle school, summer school staff that had worked with students in the past, their feedback to Kelly, they had a meeting right after summer school was over, and they went through all the pros and the cons, and they talked about, you know, just the overall perception of how the students were interacting, how the students felt during that, the discipline we saw was reduced, the amount of connectedness with the teachers. We did not go back and do a measurement piece, but that is something that we do want to look at. Last year, and I think when we talked about the summer school trial, that really was kind of an experimental piece, in the sense that we wanted to try it and see what it looked like. What's going to happen this spring is that we have some planned times that we're going to be meeting with the summer school staff that will be working on that curriculum and helping, and having them help drive and design what that curriculum's going to look like. Here in January, I'm going to meet with the principals at the middle schools and also the counselors, and Kelly is going to join me, and we're going to talk about what is it that we have that are our needs, and where do we want to put our, most of our emphasis? And so, we're going to kind of have that group set the parameters for us, do more design over the spring, and then look at, you know, that summer school program in the summer with the more direct, explicit instruction. So, I will say that I do not have a measurement piece of each individual student and how that went back into it. We did look at some of the freshmen that we had that were in, that were eighth graders that went to the freshman class, and I would say, what would you say about the ones that you had at Central?
The ones that attended summer school and the ones that we have at Central now, I will tell you, the relationship piece has been huge for Mr. Lee and myself, and Mr. Showman, just from being in the building. Those students had a face to connect with. And so, we have seen less discipline, I would assume, or would say on our part, less discipline from those that, we did have those initial relationships built during summer school. They had a safe place where they knew they could come to the office and find myself or Mr. Showman at any point and say, hey, I'm having troubles with this, as before they got into trouble. So, that's been kind of a benefit on our part.
I think that's good. I always think that if there is a way that we can evaluate, that that's one of the things we probably need to do. The other thing that I had a question about was relative to the high school. In a couple of areas, there were significant drops in the rate of completion, and I wondered if you determined why that was true? To what do you attribute those significant drops in the success rate? You need me to point them out? I chose not to.
That's okay.
Probably best not.
One of the things that we did do is we created a, the completion rate is by percentage. And so, for some of those classes, they may not have had very many students that actually were in that class. And so, if you have, if the year before, we had 15 students, and 14 of those 15 did fairly well, you would see a fairly high percentage. But if we only had seven enrolled the next year, and just even one student not pass, then that percentage would increase quite a bit. So, what we can do in the future, we kind of went back and forth. In years past, we had actual numbers, and I think we were asked more percentages. So, we put percentages in instead of numbers. And so, maybe next year, we put both the numbers and the percentage in. So, that way, we can see the size of the classes, because that might have the most significant impact on that percentage, is what I would assume.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else?
I guess I'll make one more. Yes, Madam President. I know that in the last five years or so, Head Start has, or Heartland, has been upping the social-emotional content, and focusing almost solely on that at the first of the year, and had great improvement with their classroom management. And so, now we have big social-emotional content at the preschool, and at the middle school, and summer school. And I wonder if there's any thought of including some part of that in the elementary curriculum?
Actually, I was just sitting with counselors yesterday, the elementary counselors, and we talked about the social-emotional component of the elementary building. Over the last, basically, starting last year, we introduced the second step curriculum, that our counselors basically kind of provide as a push-in curriculum across our elementary buildings. And we have basically designed to where we make sure that we have a guaranteed curriculum in social-emotional, that all students across the district in elementary are basically introduced to, and then do lessons with, within the counselors. And then, that piece is actually one of our, kind of our dreams, and I'm going to look over here at Cheryl, is that we really would like to see more of that social-emotional there. And I think Cheryl could probably say, social-emotional is a big part of our...
It's huge. And I know, just in my building alone, at Schilling, you know, we've started the morning meetings, and we've really been doing them effectively. We just kind of dabbled with them the year before. I think with extending our school day, that could be an opportunity that we could put in morning meetings, which would address some of the social-emotional things, and building that community, as they were talking about, in just five or 10 minutes. But we're able to capture that time now with our extended day, and still do the additional math and things like that. So, I think it's a possibility that we can talk about. We're just getting to plan what math is going to look like, and what our day will be.
Thank you. So, yes, it's an emphasis across all levels. And I think that the things that we are doing in the regular school year with social-emotional, you will see that we have a component that's been introduced at the elementary, and then we also have conversations of looking at, do we extend second step into the middle school? There's a middle school program for that as well, and that's another piece that we will be looking at over this semester.
Okay. Gary?
Shannon, while you were talking about what we were dreaming, and that sort of thing about things, what I look at and see here is that, if we're looking at a whole child, I don't see anywhere where there's any creative arts, no art, no music, nothing like that. And is there something that we might think about? Some of these kids are ones who could benefit probably from a lot of different stimuli in their lives. And is there any thought about adding an art piece to any of this? I know with the reading and all that, there's a lot of creativity, storytelling, that sort of stuff. What about the more visual arts and things like that? Do we build that in somewhere?
You know, I know that as, since I've been in this particular position, one of the things that we're looking at is that we want our summer school to enrich students in many capacities. Right now, elementary summer school is funded through at-risk funds. And the primary focus of those funds is to basically increase the skills in math and reading. And that's kind of where we've targeted those funds at this point. In years past, I know that we had an enrichment summer school at the elementary level. And then, I'm not exactly sure when the funding for that was removed, and when we've started, stopped that program. But I do remember that, because when I was at Central, all those kids would come in, in the summertime, and we would see them in the library, doing all of those creative things that you speak of. We really would like to do that. And if we get the indication from the board that that's something that you want us to explore, and we want to look at the funding aspect of that, I think that we would have many elementary teachers and principals that would be excited about that opportunity, because we know it's more than just academics that students need. So, we've been kind of squeezing it in there where we could. And if we, and we are trying to make a more concerted effort towards those, to those things. And I do know that performing arts and all of those things are very important for it. So, that's something for us to keep on our radar.
All right. Thanks.
Anyone else?
I might just ask one question I had going through this. I know, one thing I see is we talk about, we try to get students involved. Do we turn kids away from summer school?
We have not been turning students away from summer school. If you look at our numbers last year, I don't know exactly the number off the top of my head of how much that we increased from one year to the next. But really, we've tried to say that we do not want to turn any kids away at the elementary level. And so, our numbers did grow the last couple of years. We expanded down to kindergarten, and then we make the adjustment each year on the number of classes based upon the student need. In regards to middle school, I know last year, we had 29, or in 2017, we had 29 take advantage of middle school, and that's when there was a fee. Last year, in 2018, we did not charge a fee for this middle summer school, and we had 44 participants. So, that increased. And so, I would expect us to see an increase in numbers again this year, as we know more, and we can really target our enrollment process at the middle school, since, you know, we kind of experimented last year, kept it small. And we do want to expand the number of students at the middle school level this year. In regards to high school, we have many families that may not be able to pay the per-credit hour, and so, we work with them. We make sure that we enroll them no matter what. So, you do not have to pay in advance to be able to enroll in summer school. We have that opportunity for them. And then, we work with the parents on a one, you know, basis, to make sure that we can still meet their needs. Also, at the high school level, we do have after-school credit recovery, which is a free program that many of our students take advantage of. Did that answer your question, Jim?
Yeah. And credit recovery is a part of summer school as well. Isn't that a component?
Yeah. But we also have, during the school year, we have after-school credit recovery sessions throughout the year.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Gabe?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. I can tell by how intentional the three of you are at helping the student be successful. And I'm sure that all the teachers that are in that, I know they're all on the board, onboard as well. So, I want to thank you, on behalf of the board, for all the work you do for the students in the summertime, and the success rate that you're having. It wasn't that way when I started eight years ago, but it is now, and it's delicious. So, thank you.
The teachers give so much in the summertime. They had a hard school year, and they still give to us in the summer. We're very, very proud of them.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you very much. I think that's it.
Thank you.
Madam President?
Do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the 2019 summer school program as presented.
Second? Gary? Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Emma?
Sounds like we lost her.
We lost her, probably. Our motion carried 6-0. Moving on, on our action agenda, we're talking about Salina West program with Dr. Hardy.
Thank you, Madam President. Item B on the action agenda is Salina West Alternative Program. What I'd like to do first is just give a little bit of history, that in 2012, there was an effort to create an alternative school for USD 305. A lot of research was done on that, including some visits to other school districts. And out of that came the Salina West Alternative Program, located at Salina West Education Center. Should we wait just a little bit and see if we can get Emma back on? Okay. I think we've lost Emma.
Okay.
Well, since 2012, a lot has changed. And of course, the most obvious is that the bond projects at South High School and Central High School have facilitated new and improved career and technical education opportunities for our students who attend those high schools. Also, both high schools recently have created new class schedules that allow for more opportunities for electives, especially those electives that we've added recently, and a more personalized ELO for our students. In USD 305, one of our goals is that it's the expectation that all of our students have a complete education experience with full access to the opportunities that facilitate future success. Salina West Alternative Program does not offer the students the same opportunities that we have at the high schools, especially when you consider all the things that we've done as a part of our bond project. The other thing that I would point out, besides the career and technical education classes, is that we have a workforce initiative to help our students that are going directly into the workforce, to help them connect with employment in Salina, in our community, that has living wage compensation. We think that's really important. Again, that's the kind of thing that the students from Salina West do not get the opportunity to participate in. So, because of all this, and as a result, the demand for Salina West Alternative Program has decreased over the last few years. So, out of all that, we do have a recommendation, but I thought, if you had some questions, I'd be glad to answer those first.
Any questions? Anne?
Could you just list all of the career tech ed opportunities that are at the main high schools, and that aren't there for Salina West?
I don't know if I can give you an exhaustive list, but I can give you the highlights. And these are the ones that I, I'm talking to our principals and our career and tech folks, that these seem to be the ones that are most popular, and the ones that we think transition right to our community for living wages and good jobs. The first one, interesting when I visited with students at Salina West, and even the teachers, they have not been at the high schools to see these programs. I thought that was interesting. So, we're talking about the welding program, which is, of course, in big demand. The CNA program is extremely successful. The culinary programs that we have at both of our high schools with the labs, you know, they're real impressive. And one thing I've noticed is that when our board members get invited to come and participate, or partake, that our board members do show up. So, you've had a chance to see those impressive places. Of course, when you walk through Salina South, and you go through the commons, and you can look through the windows and see the culinary labs, it is very impressive. The other thing that I noticed that I thought was very interesting in Salina is that cabinet-making is in big demand. And we have those classes, and those are, again, classes that our students can take and transition right to the job market. So, I would say, those are the ones that I would point out that are the, seem to be the most popular, and the ones that our students tend to go to. I would also point out that our students that I would, that are looking to go directly into the workforce, these are some of the ones that are most applicable for them.
Yeah. Questions? Comments? Jim?
Dr. Hardy, you indicated that the demand for Salina West has decreased. Could you give us a little indication? In 2012, when this program was put together, what was the goal? Kind of, what were we planning to do? And how are we meeting that goal today, right now?
Okay. I appreciate that. I had heard a number, and the number I'd heard was 120 students was the expectations for the enrollment at Salina West Alternative Program. When I went through the research and the file that I was given, the expectation, the hope was 100. So, I say, I think the hope was 100 to 120 students would participate in the program. Right now, we're at about 46 or 47 students, with 35 of them being non-seniors. So, that's how many students would be returning.
Gary?
Yes?
I think Nedra and Carol and I were involved in this from the start. And I have a question is, how did the program evolve to where those students could not participate in the vocational or the tech programs at the high schools, or for that matter, vocal music, or band, or something? How did it evolve to where they became totally self-contained schools, instead of being self-contained for part of the day, and then maybe with an opportunity to go to the other high schools? Or were you involved in that part of it?
You know, the research that I read was that that was part of the discussion, but I'm not sure that it ever took off. I don't know what the barriers were. But I know that it did not happen. I know there was, I should say, I knew that there was some discussion, and I think a true few trials to have students go to the Salina Area Tech College. And there wasn't a whole lot of success that came from that.
Anne?
Yes. I guess, you said that there are about 35 that are going to head over to the other high schools, right? That's what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
So, are they, I know we have the Performance-Based Diploma Program, we have, would they be in special ed, or would they just be in the regular classrooms, or would they be in PBD? I guess it may depend on the child, or the student. But can you say that, where they'll end up?
That's a good question. One of the things that I really appreciate is that we've been talking about this for some time. And of course, what's in the best interest of our students is the most important part. The things that we have going for us is that the students that will be going back there, we are also sending support personnel. Each of the buildings would receive an extra staff member as far as student support. We both visited with the State JAG Director, the Jobs for American Graduates, which is a real good program statewide. And we've got permission for both of our JAG teachers from Salina West to accompany their students back to the high schools. I think the other part that we've been talking about is, these students will get, you know, a strong support and opportunity to link up with teachers that will serve them well. And that's, I think that's the other part that I've learned from this whole thing, is that the many resources that we have at both of our high schools will give these students more opportunity. You know, we do have some wonderful programs. Our career and tech counselors, you know, will be there to help them get into the right classes. I think the other thing, and we've talked about this before, the individual plans of study for our students, that those are game changers. That's a game changer program for our students to identify, you know, what they want to do, and then back up and have a plan of study with the right classes. And that's one thing that we, these students are missing out on somewhat, that their plans of study really are not up to date. And that's another important part of it, that we need to do for those students. So, I think all those things together, Anne, is going to help them to have a good experience.
Carol?
Yeah. How will we introduce the people who are there to that, so that they know that these opportunities are available, and we don't see maybe a dropout rate?
That's our concern. I appreciate that question. One of the things I think we're going to do is, these students will really be like our VIPs for the semester. In some respects, I think we're going to honor them in the way like they'll be new students. Some of these students haven't been at their comprehensive high school for some time, and they don't even know what the programs are. So, you know, taking them back to their school, the school for them, which might be new in some respects, and so, we're going to treat them as new students to our district in a lot of ways. You know, take them to the welding, because they haven't been to the welding shop, and show them what we're doing there. When I was talking to some of these students, they don't know what our culinary looks like. So, when we give them a tour of their high school, that they get to see these programs, and they can say, okay, this is what I've been missing. And one of the things, of course, we've noticed is, the culinary program is very popular, especially with our at-risk kids. It's a fun, safe place. They get good skills that they can transition. So, I think that's a very important part. But I think these students will be our priority students. I think we need to really honor them, and help them to have a good connection. I do feel good about the JAG program, that when these students go to their high school, that they will have somebody who's their advocate, as well as a student support staff member that we're adding.
Did we lose the JAG program at Salina West?
It's been a little transient.
Okay.
We have, we have two people there now. We've had a problem of late keeping two people, but we do have two now. And honestly, they've had a really good influence on our students.
Good. Any other questions? Comments? Do I have a motion?
Madam President, I move that we approve, beginning with the 2019-2020 school year, relocating the Salina West Alternative Program students with student support staff to their respective high schools, to allow for a complete educational experience with full access to opportunities that will facilitate future success.
Second? Anne?
I'll second. Yes.
Any discussion before a vote? All those in favor, raise your right. Jim?
Just, just real quick, one question. In the motion, the thing I noticed is that we're moving students and staff. My understanding with this is, there's no change in staffing because of this. Is that correct?
Yeah. We are going to have at least one student support staff Yeah, we are gonna have at least one student support staff person going to each of the buildings and then the JAG folks as well. So I think that's why we included that in the motion.
Okay, we're, we're not reducing staff or anything like that?
Thank you, that's a good question. The staff that are there, we have, we're a district that has, you know, comparable turnover to most other districts, so we will have positions open. And when I met with the staff, I made sure that they knew they are all school family and we definitely take care of school family.
Does that answer your question? Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Raise your right hand if you approve. Motion carries six zero. Moving on, we do not have anything for discussion. School Board reports and upcoming dates of importance include Thursday, January 10th. That's this week, a special meeting at 5:30 PM. And I'll start with Carol.
Thank you, Madam President. December was fairly quiet, but there was a DCP graduation on December 13th that some of us were able to attend. And I had the good fortune to be able to attend a tea at Cottonwood on the 18th of January. There were around 80 students and staff that attended that tea. Students got there by saving up points, earning their way, and then choosing to spend those points for good behavior and all those kinds of things to be able to attend. And cocoa was served along with little sandwiches and cookies and candy. And there was music from a couple of central high school students and just a general good atmosphere. The purpose of these teas by and large, and they're usually not as, as large in size as this one, is the Jan Knip, the staff member who organizes those, wants to give kids a chance to learn how to behave in a social setting that they may not have experienced before. The elbows off the table sort of thing and whatever. And it's really kind of a sweet little exercise for them. And they really were good kids, behaved beautifully, loved the cocoa, I can tell you that for a fact.
And did you enjoy it?
I did indeed. And I enjoyed the conversation with the kids too. That was great.
Great. Gabe?
I too attended the DCP graduation and then over the past month, I've had opportunities to stop at Middle Ark Ridge, Coronado Elementary and South Middle School with treats for staff members and an opportunity to thank those staff members.
Okay, great.
That was very fun.
Anne?
Yes, I attended the DCP graduation. I've started, well, I did several Revolutionary War songs, programs for 5th graders and I'm doing songwriting this week at Husner for the 5th graders. And then next week, I start my 29 Kansas Day programs. But I also wanted to say that I attended a lunch and learn with, at the Salina Arts Center about the 7th grade culture crawl, which was very interesting. And so I thought I'd give a little report on that. I think it was the brainchild of Nona Miller, who's the education director at the Smoky Hill Museum, and gets some funding from the Salina Education Foundation. And it involves busing all, well, all the hundreds of 7th graders downtown. I guess they've done it three years now and they, the first year, they all went on the same day and that was overwhelming. And so the next two years, they did Lakewood on one day and South Middle on another day. But their goal is, well, Nona said that everybody has pub crawls and wouldn't a culture crawl be even better? So they're trying to make the 7th graders aware of many, the many cultural things in Salina, not only to take advantage of the culture, but also to show them that people make their living doing those things. They include the library and the museum, the Friends of the River. And downtown Improvement Program was part of it. The Arts Center, they have talked about getting the Stiefel involved, but I don't think they have done that yet. But part of what they said was that among, they did an informal survey of the 7th graders and only 10% of them knew there was a river in Salina. And so the Friends of the River was thrilled to be able to expand their knowledge on that. And they had, they talked about River Fana and River Renewal and Downtown Renewal. They, at the library, they got to take old books and make poetry by blacking out all the words on a page except the ones they wanted to be in their poems. And so they would make a poem on the page by, you could read the words that weren't blacked out. And they also got to see all the great resources at the library and a lot of them had never been to the library. The last couple of years, they've ended the big, the day with a big group event at Campbell Plaza with Cash Hollister doing spoken word poetry with them all. And so it's a big thrill at the end. And they, they talked about the logistics of notifying all the law enforcement and the Salina Downtown and everybody who might wonder why there are hundreds of kids crawling around in the streets. And, and they get feedback every year from the teachers and the kids and the volunteers that help the kids go across the streets and all those things. So anyway, it happens in the fall and it will happen again next year. And it's just a really interesting program that probably expands a lot of 7th grade minds as to what Salina has to offer. Thank you.
And again, I would like to, to remind everybody, Salina Education Foundation underwrites that. So I think that's an important part of what they do too. Jim?
Yeah, got to spend some time with our operations staff at their breakfast. Really enjoyed getting to meet with those folks and stopped by Husner for their in-service yesterday, I believe that was. Enjoyed visiting with them. We had a Parks and Rec Advisory Council meeting and then I got to go visit the kindergartners at Oakdale on their last day before their Christmas break. That was a lot of fun.
Yeah. Gary?
Yes, I delivered the You Make a Difference Award announced earlier to Cottonwood. And I would say the award we gave our staff member was far less important to her than all the hugs she got from the kids in the classroom when Mr. Griffiths and I went in and gave her the award and then let the kids thank her for her good work. And then followed Mr. Griffiths around the school for a little while. This was the last day before Christmas also. And so when you go into a classroom with the principal and a school board member and Santa Claus, nobody even noticed I was there. So that was great fun. If you don't have school spirit like Jim experiences as well, if you don't have school spirit before Christmas break, get into an elementary school when Santa stops by and you'll be full of it when you leave the school building. So that was my involvement.
Okay, thank, thank you all. I attended the Diploma Completion Program as well. It was full of lots of proud parents of their children. That was really nice to see. I had a chili contest at Coronado. You got to taste about five or six different kinds of chili and vote on your favorite kind. And that was hard to decide which one was the best because you're so full of chili by the time you were done. It was, it was really pretty good, actually. I also handed out You Do Make a Difference Awards to Michelle, or Michelle, Michelle and Michelle. I had three Michelles. And the, the two Michelles that work at Husner in the, for the evening custodial work are just really delightful. They were kind of like, oh, what are the crows? Oh, what are the two crows from a long time ago that just chat with each other? I'm trying to think, I'm trying to think here. Freak, yeah. They were, they were delightful, so I really enjoyed that. And I always think the people that receive them are surprised. So with that, we do not have an executive meeting. We do have a work session, so we will move on to that.
Madam President, for my report?
Yes.
I would like to share that one of the great things I enjoy in our district especially is the time right before winter break when we have all the concerts. And it was really fun this year to see the middle school, how much they've improved from the beginning of the year to that time right before break. I always give our music teachers a lot of credit because I'm thinking that first few weeks of 6th grade band is probably a little bit painful, but it's fun to see them right before break. And this morning, I happened to be at South Middle and I went in and complimented the teacher and the students were there having their 6th grade band before school. It is great to see how much they improved. I will tell you that the Lakewood Jazz Middle School Band brought down the house at one of their concerts. And then I got to see them again at Oakdale and they brought down the house there. So our jazz program in our district is phenomenal. You can see it in both, all our, both middle schools, both high schools and see it all the way through how they grow. So that's, that makes for a really nice way to go into the, to the holiday break. This week, we had some really good in-service presentations yesterday. One I went to particularly was a film that Shannon helped put together that we were able to premiere as a school district for some of our schools that gathered at South High Auditorium. It was a really interesting program. It was called The Kids We Lose and it was one of those films that you, you watch it and a lot of it was actual film footage of students that have a lot of social emotional issues, about how they behave in classrooms and sometimes it's really difficult to watch. It also, as you watch it, you realize that, you know, that we have some of those students as well. And it really challenges us. I think we have a lot of empathy for the parents when you see that side of it. It's also interesting when you see someone who has grown up in this film. They showed them over, they had them talk through their whole experience through, just a little guy all the way through life and how life was challenging for them. At the other, the other part of it, I think I really appreciate is you really appreciate our teachers. You know, our, we, every student that graces our door becomes part of our, our school district. And we take them all, whatever their backgrounds are, whatever their challenges are, and those teachers do wonderful things, miracles in a lot of cases, I would say. So when you see this and you think about our teachers that also deal with some really challenging students, it really makes you feel very proud of what we do in education. And knowing that that happens in our classrooms and the way our teachers handle it, it makes you very proud of them as well. So that in-service yesterday, that film was very powerful. The other thing I want to point out is that tomorrow, all the superintendents in the state have been invited to participate in webinars at different times of the day with the new Kansas governor. She's reached out to the superintendents and she, instead of just telling us what she wants us to do, she's actually asking us, what are our needs? What are the things that are priorities for us? And you know, it's easy to always say funding, but it's deeper than that. It's also, you know, what, what do our students need? When we think of special education, all the wonderful things we're doing there and the cost of it, you know, we hope that that becomes a priority as well. Another, I would really like to compliment our legislators too. Lisa and I had a chance to meet with Representative Johnson. I asked him if he would just mind coming by to visit. And graciously, he came and Lisa and I had a chance to visit with him for about an hour about what he perceives coming up and how he sees some things playing out. And we were able to share the information with him that he was not, that he did not know, which was very appreciative that he was open to listening to how some of the numbers are coming out as far as the Supreme Court decision, what the legislature could do. So that was really, I think, powerful that he's a legislator who's willing to listen to us. The last thing, and I don't know if you've checked our webpage lately, but if you haven't, you're on it. And you're at the very top of the webpage. And I don't know if you're on social media very much, on Facebook or Twitter, but there's also a group picture of you going around on Facebook and Twitter. And a lot of it, the idea is that we are very appreciative that we have a Board of Education like we do. And what I've been telling people is that we really do have a gold star Board of Education, that we have seven people with different backgrounds, that you all bring a lot of experiences and background to our board and that you bring that to our district. And I think you help shape the district in a very positive way. But it's nice to know it's also about students first and that's your agenda. We really appreciate that we have board members that that's our agenda. The other thing I, I guess I really want to point out is that when I talk to the folks from KSB or KSDE is that our district really has a great reputation as a progressive premier school district. And of course, as board members, you have a lot to do with that. When they see you at the different events that we have, you know, you volunteer to go to the trainings and different things that they do, that, that's really noticed. And we are held up as an example of what a Board of Education, what a school district can do when it's all on the same page. The other thing I guess I really want to point out also is that I really feel like one of the reasons we have a great relationship with our staff is because of our board. It's an extension of how you think. I think the perfect example is how you're going around to the different schools and our different departments and saying thank you to them and treating them, of course, you know, food always goes over well. But that you thank them for being parts of our school family. And, you know, I think that makes an impact and we're hearing really positive things. People are appreciative of that. The last couple of things here, I just want to point out as I'm embarrassing you, is that I know Dale Dennis always announces, and I don't know, you don't get to hear this, every year at the state school board meeting, Dale Dennis stands up in front of everybody. He goes, "This year, we're gonna double the salaries of the Board of Education members." And there's always that chuckle that goes to the room because we know that school board members aren't financially compensated, but there are people out there who do. They do think that you are, so we always think that's interesting. So we do hope that the reward that you get is the success of our students and that you do have a very positive influence on a premier school district. So on behalf of our staff and our students, and we have a very supportive community, thank you for stepping up, thank you for your leadership and thank you for being part of our school family. So Madam President, that's my report.
Thank you, Dr. Hardy. And, and I might say this is a wonderful place to be. We work well together and, and I think we're all glad that we're here, each and every one of us. And with that, we do have a work session over Patron Insight Incorporated and the results that they gave us. So we just move to that?
Yes, in the Schmidt Room.
Yes, we will meet in the Schmidt Room. Okay. For the rest of you, we are adjourned.